A quorum being present, the special town meeting will come to order. I apologize for the delay. The plan had been for the sound and the audiovisual system to allow the voters in the auditorium to see and hear us, and for us to be able to see and hear them. Unfortunately, some of those aspects have broken down. We will be able to hear them, but not see them, and they'll be able to hear us. They may also be able to see us, although there seems to be a problem with the auditorium screen. So, again, I apologize for the delay. We'll omit reading the return of the warrant, which shows that it was properly served. I ask that all who can rise. Reverend Laurel Deary will give the invocation, and I ask that you remain standing after the invocation to recite the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear God, we are gathered together today to make decisions concerning the eight articles in the town warrant. Give us a spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that we may faithfully work to promote the well-being of all people in this town. As we consider these articles, help us to be respectful of those with differing opinions. Guide us to keep our minds open and to consider the needs of all as we make our decisions. We ask this in God's name. Amen.
Thank you, Laurel. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for coming today. As I was coming down the stairs, the fire chief reminded me to mention that if the building fire alarm sounds, we should all evacuate. Hopefully, that won't happen. I'm going to omit most of the opening comments I normally make in the interest of keeping the meeting as short as possible. I'll focus on those procedures that will be different or essential, such as how to vote electronically. I strongly encourage all participants to wear a mask, except those who are unable to do so due to a medical condition. Wear them at all times, except when addressing the voters. There are microphones at several locations, and if you want to speak, please go to the mic nearest your seat. While approaching and leaving the mic, maintain six feet of separation from everyone else. If there's another voter already at the mic, wait at least six feet away from that person. And when that person leaves, wait for one of our volunteers to disinfect the mic and adjust its height. When the volunteer steps away, then go to the mic, but please don't touch the microphone yourself. Wait until you're recognized either by me or by Assistant Moderator Arthur Steiner in the auditorium, and give the meeting your name and address. I'm Alan Wilson. Speakers must address their remarks to me as moderator and not to other town officials or residents. They must also limit their remarks to two minutes or less. And I brought my stopwatch. You should have picked up an orange card as you checked in. This identifies you as a voter. We've tested the electronic voting system thoroughly, and unlike the sound system, we think it will work perfectly. But if the electronic voting system should fail, and we have a counted hand vote, please hold up your card to make sure that you're counted. You should also have picked up five handouts as you checked in. The first is captioned "Special Town Meeting: Articles and motions, Saturday, November 13, 2021." It's especially important that you have that one because it contains the motions that we'll actually be voting on. If you don't have it, please raise your hand, and one of the tellers will bring it to you. There's also a handout prepared by the Town of Hamilton concerning Article 1, one from the Parks and Recreation Committee on Article 2, one prepared by the Manchester Affordable Housing Trust on Article 6, and one from CIMA, the Citizens for Manchester Affordable Housing, on Articles 6, 7, and 8. Non-voters are permitted to attend the meeting with the consent of the moderator. We have with us today Gregory Fettersfield, Town Administrator, the heads of almost all the town departments, Michelle Randazzo, Town Council with KP Law, Joe Domolivitz, Hamilton Town Manager, Tim Olson, Director of Public Works in Hamilton, and Brad Mustaine at Woodbridge Curran, Consultant to the Town of Hamilton. We also have with us Anna Sarkisian, a resident of Hamilton who lives on Shabaka Road, and John Bueno, also a resident on Shabaka Road in Hamilton. All these people have my permission to be here and to speak if that becomes appropriate. It's unlawful to smoke on school grounds. I ask that you turn off or mute cell phones and other electronic devices. The meeting is being videotaped by 1623 Studios and is also being recorded. I want to thank the following residents who are serving as volunteers tonight: Assistant Moderator in the auditorium, Arthur Steiner, Registrar of Voters, Eileen Buckley, Volunteers, Kathy Ryan, Muffin Driscoll, Ellen Flatley, Elaine Persons, Michelle Ann Behr, Pamela Thorne, Lee Simmons, Carolyn Kelly, Beth Heisey, Kurt Melden, Judy Laspera, Martha Farmer, Tom Keigho, Susan Myrac, Karen Sarge, and Bayon Pike. That may be a record number because we're in two rooms. Thank you all for serving the town. I extend special thanks to the Manchester Board of Health and especially to Board Member Dr. Martin Hahn. Martin has given generously of his time and expertise to help prepare for this meeting and make sure that it's as safe as possible for all participants. Our approach was to err on the side of caution rather than take chances with people's health. We'll be voting electronically at this meeting. You should have received a keypad like this when you're checked in. We're going to use the keypads for all votes. I'll announce when the voting period for each motion opens and ends. Press 1 to vote yes, or 2 to vote no. If you change your mind, just press the other button. The computer records only your last choice. If you want to abstain, don't press any button, or if you've already recorded a yes or no, press 3, and that will clear your previous choice. The handsets are in sleep mode until a button is pressed, so the screen will be blank until you vote. After you vote, the LED in the upper right corner will show green, indicating that your vote was received, and the screen will display 1A for yes, 2B for no, or 3C for abstain, and the device then goes back to sleep. We've checked the handsets thoroughly, so it's very unlikely that any will fail to work. But if you don't see the appropriate display after voting, or you experience any other problem, you can go back to the check-in station and get another. Does anyone have any questions about how to vote electronically? Okay, we'll conduct a couple of test votes just to make sure it's working and everybody understands how to use it. Senator Ed Markey and other members of Congress have proposed keeping daylight saving time year-round. The question is, should daylight saving time remain in effect year-round? Press 1 for yes, or 2 for no. Is the voting period open? 99 votes are yes, and 51 are no, and this laptop is telling me the results both in the auditorium and in the gym, so that's the total vote. Second question: Will the New England Patriots make the playoffs? Press 1 for yes, or 2 for no. We're an optimistic crowd; 59% say yes, 41% say no. When the meeting ends, it will be important to main social distancing and avoid creating bottlenecks at the exits. For this reason, I ask that you remain in your seats until I call your row in the gym or Arthur Steiner calls it in the auditorium. Please remember to return your handset to one of the bins at the doors as you leave, and there are recycling containers for water bottles or any other discarded papers. Any questions? And we'll go to Article 1. Eli Bowling makes the motion stated under Article 1 in the handout, and Anne Harrison seconds the motion. Article 4, Section 8 of the Town's General Bylaw requires that before town meeting can vote on any acquisition or divestiture of any interest in real property, the Planning Board shall report to the town at least seven days before the meeting, making a written recommendation on the conveyance. The Planning Board submitted its report to me on November 1st and recommends approval. The Planning Board also recommends that the Town require the Town of Hamilton to submit a stormwater management plan for construction of the road around Gravely Pond for approval -- excuse me -- by the Town of Manchester. And the need for a stormwater management plan will be addressed in the resubmitted processes required under Addition Number 2 in Mr. Bowling's motion. The Selectmen recommend approval. The Finance Committee takes no position on this article. And just a reminder, this is a 2/3 vote under Mass. General Law's Chapter 40, Sections 15 and 15A, because it involves the acquisition and divestiture of real estate. And I'll recognize Eli Bowling for remarks.
Good afternoon. The land running westerly from Manchester past the transfer station surrounding Gravely Pond and other water bodies in Hamilton is a subject of a conservation restriction that was put in place in 1988 that limits what activity may occur in the area. This restriction was imposed in order to preserve the area and to protect our water supply. Gravely Pond, the primary water source from which our water treatment plant draws, benefits from the conservation restriction. However, predating the conservation restriction dating back to 1959 and 1964 are two right-of-ways given to the Town of Hamilton which are exempt from the conservation restriction. The first is the current location of Shabaka Road. The second, from 1964, runs well to the north of the road and was anticipated to be a future location of the road, the current path of which carries it very close to Gravely Pond, with the closest approach being about 70 feet. In 2020, Hamilton began a process to exercise its right on the north and right-of-way to construct a permanent paved road to serve existing properties in Hamilton adjacent to the conservation area. A primary motivation is to provide their residents and emergency vehicles better access to their properties. When Hamilton looked at the engineering for a road on the northern 1964 right-of-way, it was determined that considerable work would have to be done, including blasting due to the train there. Now Hamilton has the right to go ahead and do this work without any Manchester town meeting vote, but the expense and disruption has led them to seek an alternative approach, which brings us to the point of this article. Hamilton proposes a new right-of-way between the two existing right-of-ways, one which presents better terrain on which to place a road. In return for this new right-of-way, Hamilton would release its interest in the original two right-of-ways. Manchester would benefit from a new right-of-way in a number of ways. First, the new right-of-way would be about 33,600 square feet, while the existing right-of-ways take about 76,000 square feet. Thus, Manchester would gain about 42,400 square feet, or about an acre of land placed under conservation. The existing road would be moved much further away from Gravely Pond on the other side of a hill and would be constructed with swales and infiltration basins, with the road pitched away from Gravely Pond. We can restrict the use of de-icing chemicals on the road, and we can restrict the transit of hazardous material over the road. We would have improved emergency vehicle response to our water treatment plant, which actually lies in Hamilton, and thus, emergency response to the treatment plant is handled by Hamilton, currently responding over the existing unpaved road. Finally, Hamilton has to bring heavy construction equipment over the existing gravel road, typically once a month, but sometimes more frequently, to regrade the road in close proximity to the pond. A new road further away from the pond will remove the need for this regular heavy vehicle traffic and reduce erosion into our water supply. One thing to bear in mind that may not be obvious to those reading Article 1 is that Manchester owns the land in question. Although Manchester owns the land in question, that land is actually within the Town of Hamilton. Thus, it is Hamilton's boards that have jurisdiction over most proceedings of the land, and this is why Hamilton maintains Shabaka Road. The transfer pursuant to Article 1 would be contingent on Hamilton obtaining permission from the state legislature, as the new right-of-way will be in land covered by Article 97, which is the state's authority relating to conservation easements. Additionally, Hamilton has agreed to redo their environmental notification process and to reissue a notice of intent, giving our Conservation Commission additional opportunity to weigh in on stormwater management plans for the new right-of-way. And finally, Hamilton will not be paving any roadway all the way into Manchester. A stretch of Shabaka Road from the town line to the current transfer station would remain unpaved, and Manchester has no particular interest currently in paving this stretch of road. So the Board of Selectmen supports Article 1 for two basic reasons, as I've detailed here: that the transfer allows the Town to place some additional beneficial controls on the character of the roadway in the area, and it ensures that the roadway will be moved further away from Gravely Pond. So we ask that you vote yes on Article 1.
Thank you, Eli. And I'll recognize Steve Gang, the Chair of the Manchester Conservation Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good afternoon, everyone, and thanks for coming indoors on such a beautiful day and covering up your faces. A wise teacher once told me that one should never let the perfect be the enemy of the good, and I believe that applies in this situation, and that it's a good reason to vote yes on this warrant with the modifications and amendments to it. Is it a perfect proposal in terms of protecting our water supply, which is my primary interest in the Conservation Commission's? And are all the Ts crossed and Is dotted in terms of the process Hamilton has followed? No, I don't think so. But I believe, having analyzed it and taken a couple of site visits and consulted some of the folks involved in Hamilton, some of the residents, and some of the folks at State and our invaluable conservation administrator, having done all that, I think this gives us about 90% of the protection that we can expect, given the options that are there. So is it perfect? No. But is it good? Yes, definitely, and it's a significant improvement from the very risky location of Shabaka Road today. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. And I'll recognize Christina Delicio.
So, thank you, Steve. And some of these conversations have happened very recently, within the last few days, and so my point today is to make sure that every Manchester resident understands what was missed. Hamilton is asked for a paved road. Manchester owns this land. The two right-of-ways that are in question that they own are the property of Hamilton. If we go back and correct this environmental notification form, which they have agreed to do and the state has legally said that they need to do, and correct the NOI, it still doesn't give Manchester the opportunity to discuss openly where this road should be. The EPA has a process, and that process wasn't followed. Manchester Board of Health, Board of Selectmen, Planning Board, Conservation Commission, all should have received notification of this project in July of 2020. That would have given all these boards a collaborative time to engage and discuss these together and express our concerns almost a year and a half ago. That did not happen. So, my question is, once these defects and yesterday's paper stated permitting process glitches -- these were not glitches, these were oversights, and some of the wording in the environmental notification form was completely false, misleading. And in fact, Hamilton stated that we were involved with this permitting process and that we supported it, and that is false. This was stated a year and a half ago. So, I have two questions, and they are not rhetorical. I would like the town administrators from each town to answer the question: Why are we, Manchester, not asking for the time legally that we should be afforded to this? And agreeing today is agreeing to the road and its current location. That's a legal decision that we made today that we cannot take back. Number 1. Number 2. Hamilton, when you decided that there was a defect, why did you not pull the reins back and say, "Hey, let's do this right"? Why are we pushing something through at the 11th hour? Why are we starting a relationship between the two towns on this note? We have a lot to go forward with and a lot of decisions to make together, and this seems like Hamilton is holding us over a barrel to make a decision that we should have had a lot of comment in a year ago. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Ms. Delicio. So there was a question there for our Town Administrator, Mr. Fettersfield? Your mic isn't on.
Would it be helpful to repeat exactly what you would like answered?
Why, once the defect notification was determined, why are you continuing to enforce this just in the prime of all?
We don't have a mic here. Bob, can you?
There's a switch on the mic, the audio mic, that's on the table. It should be green.
It is?
It is.
Mr. Moderator, we have difficulty hearing in the auditorium. Can the speakers be closer to the microphone, please?
Was that -- Arthur, was that you?
It was. We're having difficulty hearing the speakers. Can they get closer to the microphone, please?
Yes, they can. I forgot to take my mask off, so that may be part of the problem.
Testing, testing.
Is this working now?
Is this better? Yes. Okay. All right. So, the question is, why am I advancing this project? I refer back to the Board of Selectmen's decision to put this on the warrant. That is their decision, not mine, so I carry out their wishes in that regard. As I've explained to people and to Christine in the past, this originated back in early '20, when Joe, my counterpart in Hamilton, came to us, to me, and said, "Can we get this on the agenda for the Selectmen to discuss?" We proceeded to make those plans and then realized that because of the conservation restrictions involved, this would require the Article 97 action at the state level. And so, Hamilton went back to the drawing board and then presented to us this past winter and spring, the detailed plans in '21. And that's when the Selectmen voted to advance the proposal to present it to all of you to make a decision back last spring. We were going to have it on the annual town meeting, and then we delayed that until the fall town meeting because of the Planning Board not being able to hold their hearing in time to give their recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Fettersfield. Arthur, are you -- are the folks in the auditorium able to hear us now?
We are. People, if future speakers could speak very closely to microphone and pronunciate, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll try to remind them to do that, and if they don't and you have trouble hearing, please let us know. Ms. Delicio.
So my specific question was, once written documentation this week was realized that the notice was not accurate, defective, why are we still here? Why are we not going back and affording each board, Board of Health, Planning Board, Conservation Commission, and the Board of Selectmen to determine this? Why are we not allowed to enforce our legal rights to review this as a town? Why are you still continuing to push this forward? The state has determined that notice wasn't proper, and we are voting on something that would have been discussed during this hearing in July of 2020, that we don't have a choice today. We are voting on something that the Town of Hamilton had a choice to decide over our property.
Mr. Fettersfield.
So, each one of you as residents will have that same opportunity with the redoing of the ENF, the Environmental Notification Form, which is the state's process through MEPA, which is the Massachusetts Environmental Protection Act, and also through the NOI, which is the Notice of Intent, which will be going before the Hamilton Comm. That'll be -- those both processes, Hamilton has committed to working in collaboration with our Conservation Commission, and so, there will be those very opportunities that Christina rightfully says we should have. So, those processes will be redone, and you, you as residents, will have that very opportunity to debate the merits of the proposal and to go through that permitting process. You have a choice. You can approve the plans going forward to go through that permitting process, or you can say no. That is clearly a choice, and that choice is before you today. There's no requirement to have permitting precede the vote, or the vote precede the permitting process. That's a choice that any community can make. So there is no prescribed sequence that these kind of projects need to follow. It's up to the applicant, it's up to the towns to decide. So again, you will have those opportunities to participate in those permitting processes because Hamilton has agreed to redo them, and you have those choices, as we've just described.
Thank you, Mr. Fettersfield. There was also a question at the end of Ms. Delicio's remarks addressed to Joe Domolivitz of Hamilton. The question was, when it was recognized in Hamilton that there was a defect in the ENF notification, why didn't the Town of Hamilton correct it? I think Mr. Fettersfield's comments probably addressed that in that the process is going to be redone, starting from the beginning. But if -- Mr. -- excuse me. Joe, if you'd like to supplement Greg's remarks, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you for allowing us to be here. Basically, you're right. Greg answered the question. I would just add that, you know, there is no--
I think the folks in the auditorium might have trouble hearing. Could you get a little closer to the mic?
Basically, there's no required way in which to go through the permitting process. We try to time it with town meetings and things like that so we get everything we need. When we -- since this was already on the agenda, we checked with council if we needed to stop, and we were advised that we do not have to stop, that this is perfectly allowable. We're trying to work with the Town of Manchester as best we can. We understand that there was an error made in official notification, but the Town of Manchester knew about the plans going all the way back to the beginning of 2020, and we've been to most of the boards in the Town of Manchester for meetings, so it's not like they weren't notified, they just -- one letter didn't get sent. So I apologize for that. We don't -- we can't explain how the error happened, but we're willing to go back and redo the process to fix it.
Thank you, Mr. Domolivitz.
Thank you.
Arthur, is anyone asking in the auditorium to be recognized to speak?
We do have a request to speak.
Then I would ask you to recognize that person.
Ani Sarkisian. Do I give my address or anything?
We can't hear whoever is speaking.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Jesus. Sorry. I'm not used to speaking into a microphone. I apologize. This is Ani Sarkisian. I am a resident of Hamilton, Massachusetts, living on Shabaka Road. So this is a two-town issue that requires a two-town solution, and I understand that a lot of changes have been made to the plan as recently as this morning. And I urge you, before you make any sort of decision, please take the opportunity to have a meeting where all the respected commissions and boards from both towns have the opportunity to hear from all the residents who will be impacted by this, because it's not as simple an issue as paving a road. We are gravely concerned about the public safety impact it will have on other parts of the road in terms of how much traffic will be able to go through and at what of the road in terms of how much traffic we'll be able to go through and at what speed. We have learned that Manchester has the ability to restrict materials and vehicles from their side of the road, but we have been asking for weight limits, vehicle restrictions, axle restrictions, and speed restrictions on our side of the road, and have continuously been told that that can't happen until after construction. And it's inconsistent on two sides, and I think we need to make sure that everybody is hearing the same information at the same time. That road has loads of pedestrians, cyclists, people coming for recreation, and is extremely narrow along the areas of Beck's Pond, for example. Increasing the traffic will run the risk of more accidents, particularly to people recreating along the road, and that can contaminate Beck's Pond, Gravely Pond, all of the waterways alongside. The residents of Shbaka Road who are against paving it all the way through feel like we haven't had proper opportunity to make sure that we're heard. And, I'm sorry, I'm not a great public speaker. We're just asking that the two towns have a two-town meeting so that we can all express ourselves and make sure that all the issues are on the line for everyone to hear. And, yeah, I think that's about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Sarkisian. Joe Dumelwitz, did I see your hand up? No. Further discussion?
We have one more speaker to be recognized. Mr. Moderator?
Thank you, Arthur. Would you recognize that person, please?
The reason for the delay, folks, in here is that there's only one microphone working in the auditorium, so people have to go to it, and they're sharing it with the assistant moderator there, so it's taking a little longer. Mr. Moderator, we have one additional speaker from Hamilton to be recognized.
Please. Thank you, Arthur.
Please state your name.
Greetings and good afternoon. Please state your name. Oh, I'm sorry, that's what I was going to do next. Okay. Mr. Wilson, Mrs. Steinhardt, my name is John Bono. I am a resident of Hamilton. Susan Trevejo and I live on Shbaka Road, and our property abuts round and gravelly ponds, where there may be blasting, and are in proximity of the Hamilton-Manchester borderline. We are conservationists, and our solidarity with fellow Manchester environmentalists regarding that very grave concerns about widening and rerouting Shbaka Road. The proposed road does not address the safety of pedestrians and cyclists, who have enjoyed this quiet road for decades. This only benefits motorists and commercial vehicles, who will undoubtedly make this a heavily-used thoroughfare. The increased traffic will introduce more contaminants such as oil and diesel film and toxic windshield wiper fluid to runoff into Beck Round and especially Gravely Pond. We have great respect for the Manchester portion of unpaved Shbaka Road that acts as a buffer to deter speeding motorists and large commercial vehicles from spoiling this beautiful and peaceful land. Thank you. Thank you, Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Bono.
Mr. Moderator, we have one more speaker, a Manchester resident, to be recognized.
Let me just see if we have anybody in the gym, Arthur, and then I'll come back to you.
Okay.
Ms. Hill.
Thank you. Thank you, Ellen. I want to speak more to the procedural aspect of this article than the content aspect. I have misgivings about the content, and that's why we have so many amendments before us. Procedurally, we can do better. We have to do better. This article was pulled in the spring because procedurally the planning board was left out of debate and consideration of the article. The article is posted now and amended because of omission flaws and, again, procedural flaws. Hamilton did not notify properly our town and our boards to participate in the early aspects of the proposal. Our town administrator, Mr. Fetterfield, has referred to these procedural failures as glitches. And I have to say, I find that minimizing and inappropriate. If these glitches affect the health and drinking water of our community, we're going to see our real estate values plummet, apart from our health. I want to thank Christine Delisio on the planning board for working so hard with the diligence required to really vet this article. So now we have amendments, we have promises from Hamilton. But I think the town needs to look at why this casual disregard of procedure happened. We need to tighten our procedures, we need to tighten the interdepartmental efficiency of our boards, and I just urge people to vote no now. This whole article is going to come before us again, and there's no reason to approve it now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. I see your hand, but I'm going to go back to the auditorium, and then I'll come to you. Arthur, do you have another speaker?
Yes, we have a Manchester resident to recognize.
Please do. Please state your name.
Yes, Dave Parmally from 28 Norwood Ave. I want to...
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the name. Could you repeat it, please?
Dave Parmally, 28 Norwood. I just want to say that I think Manchester has some experience in paving unpaved roads. We've seen what Mill Street has become. It's a lightning rod of traffic problems and speeding. We've put in several stop signs to try and mitigate the problems on Mill Street. I think the same thing will happen with this project having a fully paved road and only a very short section of unpaved road left to slow down traffic. It will become a cut-through, and it will permanently change that whole area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, this is Tim Olson, who is the DPW Director in Hamilton.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight. We've been through several meetings with the Butters, I think at least two. We've given them a chance to talk and to voice their concerns. We've also been through pretty much every board in Manchester along this way. There is, there was a little oversight on the communication, or I guess the notification. We are looking to, like mentioned, we are looking to redo those. We would like everybody on the same page. That's why we've been to numerous boards and numerous committees with the Butters as well. I think it needs to be said that we're trying to find a common good and common ground for this road and the new proposed location. We're trying to move it away from Gravely Pond. I think back in 1959 to 1964, the two plans that are on file, that was the intention. I don't have that, you know, in writing, but there is a reason why a new right-of-way was formed. So we're just trying to do that about 57 years later, try to figure out this for the health of the residents of Hamilton, public safety divisions responsible for maintaining that roadway. That roadway gets very, very hard to travel and hard to navigate. I would hate to have some type of response or lack of response because of the road condition. Being gravel, once it gets into a bad condition and it rains, or if there's snow or poor weather, we are limited in what we can and can't do to get that road back into good shape for motorists and vehicles. So I've talked to our public safety divisions over in Hamilton. They are 100% behind this project. I've talked to the bus drivers and the school and the Butters. Most of them, I know you've heard from a couple, but we have satisfied their concerns along this way. And we are also looking at the ability...
Mr. Olson, excuse me, but I have a general limit of two minutes for speakers, and you're over that, so would you come to a conclusion?
Yeah, I'm just going to let you know, we've tried to come to common good. Right now, we do have ownership over the said road in its current location. We realize that is too close to Gravely Pond, so we are trying to move it away and try to pave it for a variety of reasons. But I appreciate everybody's vote of yes tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Further discussion in the gym? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Ashley Oaks. I'm on North Street, 7 North Street, and it sounds like there are three main concerns, one procedural, one environmental, and one speed and safety. It sounds like we've adequately addressed procedural, that will be refiling and redoing and giving the town an opportunity to be involved. And it sounds like environmentally, we feel like we can get comfort that we will be able to protect and even improve the watershed. So is it possible that we could propose an amendment that would address some of the citizens here, their concern about the safety? Could we include some speed mitigation measures?
Thank you, Ms. Oaks. Mr. Fetterfield? Can you respond to that? Would you stand, please?
So if you'd like to propose an amendment to the motion, that's certainly your privilege.
Hi. I did not know the procedure, so I guess I'm supposed to propose an amendment or make a motion to amend to address speed concerns on the road?
What we have before us now is Mr. Bowling's motion, which is the one that's in the handout. So if you would like to amend that, you can propose an amendment now.
Okay. Could I propose an amendment to also include extra measures to address citizens' current concerns about the speed? So speed mitigation measures for the roadway?
Okay. So I think what that would do would be to add to Mr. Bowling's motion of paragraph Something like, "The towns of Manchester, Manchester by the Sea, and Hamilton shall include in the collaboration safety measures, including speed mitigation." Like that? Hamilton representative, do you want to respond to that?
Hello? Thank you. Hamilton fully supports that request. We would find a work together on speed mitigation. We were already planning on it, so...
Okay. So let me finish writing that down, and I'll repeat it. I have a question about point of order regarding this amendment. This article, in its essence, is a land transfer article. We do not control the road in Hamilton. It's in the town of Hamilton. We are in a Butter, and we have certain right-of-way agreements with the town of Hamilton. They're asking us to address a change in the right-of-way agreement. I don't understand how we can, as a town meeting, write into our transfer agreement public safety issues that are under the authority and purview of the town of Hamilton. That's beyond the scope of what this article is? It's beyond the scope of what the amendments to the article are? Well, I'm going to confer with town council. The question that Mr. Bobbit Turner has raised is whether Ms. Oaks's proposed amendment, as I've rephrased it, is within the scope of the warrant. So town council and I have conferred on this, and we agree that, well, let me start from the beginning. All four of the existing additions in Mr. Bowling's motion are conditions to which this meeting's vote will be subject, assuming that it votes in favor. Ms. Oaks's amendment simply adds a fifth condition to town meeting's approval, and therefore I conclude that, like the others, it's within the scope of the warrant. So is there further discussion? Yes. Mrs. Wood. Mrs. Wood has moved the question. Gretchen, thank you. Do you mind if I just inquire whether Arthur has anybody waiting in the auditorium?
We are waiting to recognize one speaker unrelated to the amendment.
Pardon me?
We are waiting to recognize one speaker from Manchester unrelated to the amendment.
Unrelated to the amendment? Okay. Gretchen, would you mind deferring that motion? I think we have one more speaker in here as well. Arthur, would you recognize the person in the auditorium?
She's approaching and recognizing the speaker from Manchester. Please state your name.
Hi, it's Gillian Kellogg for Alpine Road. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I'm a visual person, and it would help me a lot if I could see a map of where the road is now and where the road is proposed to go. Do we have a map?
There is a map in the handout that I referred to, prepared by the town of Hamilton, that was at the check-in station.
Okay. I just received one. I didn't get it in the original handout. I apologize. And then I have a second question, which, living here in Manchester, I'm not clear about if this relates to the proposed development at the other end in Hamilton. I'm concerned about the timing of all this, and I don't know enough about it, but it seems to me that our environmental, our woods are threatened on both sides, and I'd like to know more about that. Is there anyone who can answer that?
Mr. Gang, could you answer that? Again, this is Steve Gang, the Chair of the Conservation Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you for the question, Ms. Kellogg. I can't be authoritative about this because, like the Shbaka Road improvements, the Manchester Conservation Commission isn't in charge of that project that's proposed. Conservation Commission isn't in charge of that project that's proposed. It's called the Chabaco Hill Project. It's proposed for the corner of Essex Street or Route 22 with Chabaco Road. However, it abuts land that the town of Manchester owns, other land in the town of Hamilton, which we acquired in order to protect our watershed, in this case closer to Round Pond than Gravelly Pond. So ultimately, we will be involved as an abutter, I believe. The status is that the project is before the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission of Hamilton, and it's difficult to predict, just observing their meetings, how that's going to sort out. It is, in some respects, similar to a major project proposed here in Manchester, except that it is not a 40B project. It is a market-rate, privately-financed project. I think the goal is to build 50 luxury clustered residences close to Route 22 and Chabaco Road. And I'd invite people to inspect the materials that Hamilton has shared with the town of Manchester about the project, and of course, to get involved by looking at, zooming in to the relevant meetings, Planning Board or CONCOM or others. I hope that's helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Gang. I've allowed Ms. Kellogg's question and Mr. Gang's answer, but I don't want to turn this into a lengthy discussion of a project in the town of Hamilton, which is in the review stage of town boards there. So that's the last. We're going to talk about that development.
Mr. Moderator, we have another speaker from Manchester to recognize.
Thank you, Arthur. Would you do that, please?
Recognizing the speaker from Manchester, please state your name.
Susan Turnbull from 52 Bridge Street. So I have a question. The assumption seems to be that if we vote no, it means that Hamilton will not be allowed to pave the road. Is that true?
Mr. Fetterstiel?
So if you vote no, Hamilton would not be able to relocate the road, but they do have the current easements that predate the conservation restriction. So they could either pave the existing road, the gravel road that's there, or if they chose, could develop the, what's called the 1964 layout, pave that. And neither of those actions require town meeting vote in Manchester.
Thank you, Mr. Fetterstiel. Yes, ma'am.
Camilla Blackman, Coolidge Point. Guess my question has to do with timing. In the additional wording, it says, "Time is of the essence." I'd like to understand why is timing right now so important? It feels to me as if this would be better, a better article, the entire package for next spring, rather than right now.
Mr. Fetterstiel?
So I think that wording was added to avoid the possibility of stalling, in essence. So Hamilton has been working on this project for a number of years. They are anxious to do something out there with the road. Not only the gravel section, but the paved section has some serious deficiencies. So I think they are anxious to move forward. And so the, it's sort of boilerplate language in a lot of agreements, to say that time is of the essence, so that people are making their best efforts to move things along, still being thorough, but not wasting time. It's, I guess I would defer to town council on this, but I think it's pretty typical language that you see in a lot of contracts or agreements.
And town council is nodding yes. Yes. Ms. Foley?
Mary Foley, One Plaski Drive. I have a concern that if this was voted through today, we don't have a say in the location of the road. I'd like for us to be able to review that, and maybe there's a better place to put the road within the conservation restriction. I also have concerns about water main pipes being laid upon these roads now that they're straightened out. There's been discussions between the two towns over the years of water main pipes along the road, so I'd like those addressed before, hopefully before a vote. Thank you.
Can you respond to that question? Yes, Mr. Donlowitz. This is the Hamilton Town Manager again.
Sorry. With regard to the questions you just asked, there is no intention at this point to put water or sewer or anything like that in the road. It's just to create a paved road. This project began well before anybody had purchased the property at the other end of Chabaco near Essex. This project is not related to that proposed development. As the moderator said, that's in review, and I'd let that stay there. It's gonna do what it does on its own. But this was an intent to improve Hamilton's road for Hamilton's residents. We've had several public meetings with our residents and here in Manchester to try to hear people's concerns. We'll continue to do that and amend the plan as appropriate. Could you remind me, there was one other question I think I missed?
There was one other question, and that is whether the restarted processes that will be discussed, both under MEPA and under the Notice of Intent under the Wetlands Protection Act, would consider alternative locations for the road than the one that's planned now?
I would say that there's not a lot of room there. You have the two right-of-ways that are existing, that town of Hamilton has the right to do something with, or the one that's proposed. The one that's proposed is in between them, and it follows the contour of the land. If you go outside of either the two existing right-of-ways, we're into either ledge and private properties on one side, or the lake on the other side. So I don't think that there's really anywhere else to put it, but we'll follow MEPA's advice on this. The road was designed this way with the input of the state agencies as well. So we think this is the right place to put it because of what we've heard from the state already.
I'm going to confer briefly with town council again. Sorry, I had a question for town council that turns out not to have been relevant to this discussion. Further discussion? Yes, sir?
Yes, George Davis of Woodholme Row. It's really easy to see the appeal of relocating the way that exists now, the merit of that for the residents of Manchester. And I appreciated Mr. Bowling explaining that the rights of way were granted prior to the writing of the conservation, about the conservation restriction. I did, this morning, have an opportunity to read the conservation restriction, and there are a number of prohibited uses. And amongst them, in the first paragraph of numbered prohibited uses is roads. So again, Mr. Bowling explained that the rights of way existed, preceded those, and so they continue to have kind of a standing. But it seems that what we are being sort of asked to accept is, okay, we can have the advantage of moving the road, but we have to go with paving. And that trade-off, I don't know, I don't really see that as, you know, a good trade-off. And people have already talked about, well, actually, Mr. Bowling used the expression, "the character of it," and I think that's a good expression, because the character of that way is, as I see it, keeping that Chabaco Road and Upper Pine Street from becoming a thoroughfare. And so, yes, we have bicyclists out there, walkers out there, runners out there. We don't have a lot of vehicles through there, but if it's paved, over like 80% or more of that distance, because, yeah, okay, Manchester cannot pave, but that still leaves 80, 85, whatever the percentage is, paved. And I do expect we're going to see a lot more vehicular traffic and higher speeds along that road. And so I think that is bad news for the town. I think perhaps a way to get around this is an addition to Mr. Bowling's motion, that if we add on to the end of number one, to say, "And the restrictions shall prohibit paving of any road on the land," that may take care of it for us. And I think that because the proposed easement would be on the land that is, to which the conservation restriction does apply, that perhaps that would take care of what we need to do to not have paved road.
Mr. Davis, you're over two minutes now. Are you proposing...
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Well, let me just be clear. Are you proposing a second amendment to Mr. Bowling's motion?
Yes, I will.
And would you read it to me again, please?
So the amendment would be adding wording to the end of number one of Mr. Bowling's motion, and that wording would be...
Read it slowly, so I can write it down.
"And the restrictions shall prohibit paving of any road on the land."
Okay, let me read it back, just to make sure I have it right. You would add at the end of number one, inside the quotation marks, "And the restrictions shall prohibit paving of any road on the land." Is that correct?
Correct.
Is that seconded? It's seconded. And I think I neglected to ask for a second for Ms. Oaks's amendment, so I'll do that now, just to cover that base. Is Ms. Oaks's amendment a seconded?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
All right. Okay. So now we have two amendments pending, and we can only have two amendments pending at one time. And I'll recognize Mrs. Wood. Can you speak in...
I was going to ask for an opportunity to respond to Ms. Davis's amendment. Is that all right now?
Yes.
All right. So I understand the objective of the amendment, but I have to ask, why would Hamilton ever...
Could you take your mask off?
Hold on, just a second. So I have to ask, why would Hamilton ever sign such an agreement with us? It would actually reduce the amount of authority they have over their existing property. Right now, they have two right-of-ways, both of which they can pave if they want to. The other right-of-way is more difficult to pave, but they could do it. Sometime in the future, the economics will probably shift to the point where it will be worth it to them to pave. If we do this new right-of-way and say, "Well, we're going to give you a new right-of-way, and you're going to give up the old right-of-ways, but you don't get to pave it," they get no benefit, none, to Hamilton. Their emergency vehicles access isn't improved, their residential access isn't improved, their operational costs remain high because they have to continue to come through and regrade the road. They would have zero motivation to sign this agreement. I don't see it as a useful approach.
Mr. Donlowitz, would you like to respond? And then I'm going to go back to Mrs. Wood.
Hello? Okay. I think the selectmen put it very well. We wouldn't sign that. With that amendment added, we wouldn't sign the agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Donlowitz. And Mrs. Wood. Mrs. Wood has moved the question. That's the motion to cut off debate. Is that seconded? And I'm sure you mean to include the amendments as well as the main motion. So we'll vote first on the motion to cut off debate. That's a two-thirds vote. If you're in favor of that, please press one. We're voting to move on moving the question. Voting period is open to cut off debate. If you're in favor of cutting off debate, please press one. Opposed, press two. And the vote is 135 to 7. That's well more than two-thirds. So now we have the two amendments to deal with. Although the main motion is a two-thirds vote under statute, the amendments are simple majorities. So we'll vote first on Mr. Davis's motion, amendment, excuse me, and that is to add at the end of paragraph one of Mr. Bowling's additions, "And the restrictions shall prohibit paving of any road on the land." If you're in favor of that amendment, please press one. If you're opposed, two. And the voting period is open. The vote is 49 yes and 97 no, and that motion, that amendment is rejected. And we'll now vote on Ms. Oaks's amendment. That's also a simple majority, and that amendment would read five at the end of Mr. Bowling's additions. Five, "The towns of Manchester by the Sea and Hamilton shall include in their collaboration safety measures on Chabaco Road, including speed mitigation." Everybody clear? If you're in favor of that, please press one. Takes a minute to get that into the system. Speed mitigation. No, speed mitigation. Okay. If you're in favor, press one. Opposed, press two, and the voting period is open. Voting period is closed, and the vote is 127 yes to 25 no, and that motion is approved, that amendment is approved. All right. So that brings us to Mr. Bowling's motion as amended with Ms. Oaks's amendment. And this, by statute, Chapter 40, Sections 15 and 15A, is a two-thirds vote. Everybody understand what we're voting on. Don't want any confusion. If you're in favor of Mr. Bowling's motion as amended, please press one. If you're opposed, press two. Voting period is open. And the vote is 91 yes and 60 opposed. And that 97 is 60%. It fails to get two-thirds, and therefore is not adopted. Let me see that again. Let me see the... Let me see the-- Okay. Well, that took as long as I estimated for the entire meeting. We'll go to Article Two. And Sean Daly, the Chair of the Parks and Recreation Committee, makes the motion printed in the warrant, in the handout, under Article Two, and let's see, who seconds? John Round seconds. Remarks, Mr. Daly.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Sean Daly, and I am the Chair of the Parks and Rec Committee. I'm hopeful this will not involve Town Council, and the land in question is in Manchester. So going from there, like I said, I'm the Chair of the Park and Rec Committee. There's a number of us that work closely with Cheryl Marshall, who is the Director of Park and Rec. And the Park and Rec Committee has talked about Article Two and unanimously approved this Article Two going forward. And that comes from discussions we've had internally, but also many of us have been involved with youth activities for a number of years, and also had a number of one-off conversations with the residents of the town of Manchester. That being said, though, let me provide some other information on why we're asking that you vote yes on Article Two. Some other information is, ten years ago, the Donovan Property Project conducted a survey and identified a field shortage in Manchester. In 2017, the townwide master plan survey indicated the number one used by residents for Pine Street parcel burn dump with athletic fields. In 2020, the town completed an athletic master plan, which identified a critical shortage of multi-use fields, overuse of existing fields, and inadequate and poor field conditions. And let me add to that, shortage of fields. Coach Field Playground, if you're not aware, at Brook Street, cannot be used in the fall until 5:30. The high school has priority there, so youth sports cannot get on there until 5:30 in the fall, and as the season progresses, there's less light to use on that field. The high school field here has limited liability, which you need to reserve primarily the weekends, and if you do, there are fees which can be very costly for programs to use this field. The inadequate, poor field conditions, Sweeney Park has serious drain issues after any type of rain. I think many of you have been down there, have been down there. It can be closed for a day to a week, depending on the amount of rain. Mascanoma Park has drainage issues and retains water after rain. In our eyes, that is really not an athletic field, that's a park, and it's being used because of the lack of athletic fields. The Pine Street parcel has an activity and use limitation deed restriction, which limits possible future use, but an athletic field is an allowable and appropriate use per the AUL. The size of the field will be determined by the engineering study will be conducted. This field will be built up on top of the grade, so that would minimize the impact on the soil. And as we move forward with a Sweeney Park upgrade, this will help serve the sports programs who will be displaced when Sweeney Park is under construction. Lastly, the town has not made a big investment in athletic fields since Coach Field Playground switching to turf in 2007. Personally, I would say that's been a big success because that turf field, the amount of use, would get out of that field, certainly. So I ask you, please vote yes on Article Two. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you, Mr. Daly. I should mention that the Selectmen recommend approval, and the Community Preservation Committee unanimously voted to recommend the transfer of $46,100 from the Community Preservation Fund, as stated in the motion. That's a legal requirement that they do that. And I'll recognize Sarah Melish, the Chair of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank everyone for coming on this beautiful day. The Finance Committee devotes many hours during the annual budget process, reviewing capital requests for the current year, the next five years, and longer-term projects. We feel it is an extremely important process to ensure town revenue is spent wisely and projects are prioritized. Although the Finance Committee understands the desire for more playing fields, this request does not appear in the capital plan for any year, no presentation has been made to the Finance Committee, and no determination has been made that a million-dollar multi-use field is the best use for this site. We feel it should be reviewed as part of our annual budget sessions this winter, and do not recommend approval at this meeting. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Melish. And I'll recognize Jeff Bobber Turner for the Board of Selectmen.
Good afternoon. And thank you for coming to deliberate over the town's business in the midst of the craziness of COVID. The issue of making more playing fields available to our children and families is longstanding. My own family's experience dates back to around 2006, when my wife was on the Athletic Fields Committee, developing recommendations for fields to the Board of Selectmen. As Sean Daly mentioned, in that time, only one field has become available. Since 2006, only one field has become available. The site parcels for this particular proposal are on the old burn dump, something that I think most people have some familiarity with. It was purchased because of contamination in the soil, and the soil was remediated to the extent that more soil was put on top of the existing problematic soil. The proposed development would add another layer of soil on top of that. The burn dump remediation has an activity and use limitation deed, restrictions that were placed, and within those restrictions, athletic fields is an allowable use. The cost of this design is $92,900. Let's be clear, this article is the first stage in a process that has got multiple stages. This is just money for design. In fact, these costs will be covered. A site survey, a wetlands delineation, environmental assessments, preliminary design, final design, construction bid documents, and a notice of intent filing with CONCOM and the Mass DEP. You've become very educated about notices of intent today. The funding sources are a fifty-fifty split between free cash and a CPC grant. I want to note that the CPC supported this by voting unanimously for their portion of the money. This is the least expensive option of any alternative use, partly fulfilling a need for families and youth in our town compared to putting a building on that area. There are a lot of problems with putting any buildings on that area. The Board of Selectmen supports Article Two for two reasons. The need for playing fields is well-established and supported by the Athletic Fields Master Plan Survey of 2020. Development monies for this field at the Pine Street site fit into a graduated field development plan. Having the Pine Street site available for use will alleviate the increased pressure for field scheduling when the Sweeney Field construction process is in process. Approving development funds for Pine Street makes long-term planning sense. This is not an approval to actually build the development, it's an approval for creating a development document that we can then ponder over and decide whether we want to build or not. We ask you to vote yes on Article Two.
Is there further discussion in the gym? Yes, ma'am.
Alida Bryant, Old Essex Road. So is there a plan actually in place and in the capital budget for Sweeney Park?
Ms. Melish.
Yes, Sweeney Park is in the capital budget. The burn dump is not.
Thank you.
Is there discussion in the auditorium?
Mr. Moderator, we have a Manchester resident to recognize.
Yes, would you do that, please?
Recognizing the Manchester resident approaching the microphone. Please state your name.
Good afternoon, Dustin Plamondon, 26 Rockwood Heights. So we've been given a document in green describing some more information about the proposed field that would be made available for the building of an athletic field. The piece mentioned here is that the field does have activity and use limitation granted for athletic field, and that is true. However, the reason we have this in the first place is because this is a contaminated site. There are additional stipulations about what can be done. I know that it has just been mentioned that the field would be built up over the contaminated soil cap, which is just a bit of soil on top. I do have substantial concerns about the type of field that could be built upon this site, and that's for two reasons. So first, of course, is any of the contamination that's below the soil would need to be specifically left alone so that it doesn't recontaminate, doesn't pose a health risk for the town and the abutters. And the second is the size of the lot. So currently, if you were to go back to the 2020 Westin and Sampson Master Plan proposed for this, it proposes a U-12-sized soccer field, which is a 240 by 150. I think you might see that if they build up, and there's going to need to be a slope to the residential abutters, the size of the field and the size of the lot, we're going to get a much smaller field than you might anticipate. It's going to be far less useful for offsetting what is currently used in other parts of the town. And there are other concerns. Abutters haven't been directly approached about this, so there are going to be future concerns with this. My concern now is, we're going to get $100,000 into this project and find out that that's $100,000 wasted. So my recommendation is, we vote no for this. There are other uses potentially for this, but for this type of field, I do not recommend. Thank you.
Further discussion in the gym? Yes, ma'am. Here's the mic right here.
Wendy Dixon, 295 Summer Street. I don't remember a discussion about brainstorming over the use of the field anyway. Every time I drive by it, I think, well, we can't have people breathing on it, so why don't we have solar, just massive solar array? And particularly given the shift that we will be making eventually to more sustainable energy sources, it just, there it is. I mean, I don't think we'd have to pay another electric bill in our town if we did that. When there were some analysis about that property for a solar array several years ago, there was one that only had it along the periphery, nothing actually using the field, using the full acreage of that field. And today, the incentives are so much better than they were a few years ago. So I love the idea of having kids having more outdoor time and playing sports, but it's just the principle almost of, was there a discussion about possible uses? Because we need affordable housing, we need land for that, we need, you know, all sorts of things. But I think that solar array would be something that would be within the restrictions. No one would be breathing heavily, running up and down a field on it, and it just would be a good idea. That's it. Thanks.
Arthur, do you have anybody waiting in the auditorium?
No further speakers in the auditorium.
Sorry?
No further speakers in the auditorium at this time.
Thank you. I have two people. I'm going to recognize the one closest to me. No, the person in front of you. No, no, the person--
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Maybe I saw the wrong hand. Okay, you're next, then. My apologies.
No. Can you hear me? Florence Doyle, 6 Anthony Avenue. We are abutters to the Pine Street site, and I have a whole bunch of questions, but I'd like to bring up one in particular. I'm very concerned about the location for the safety of children and families accessing that field. I mean, it's very close to the ramps, the 128 ramps. I think we all know that nobody drives 20 miles an hour getting off either ramp, and there are currently no sidewalks to speak of, and I think children should be, and families should be guaranteed safe access to that side. We are big soccer fans, by the way both our kids played, so we're fully in favor of athletic fields, but that particular location seems to be a very dangerous one to us. A quick other note, we've seen this field go through several expensive transformations already in the past few years, only to go back to tall weed. Is there any way for abutters such as ourselves, who've already been affected negatively by lack of, loss of privacy and other concerns, to perhaps consider some kind of a fence to surround the fields, if you should come to that, to prevent foot traffic after hours activities, which we know will probably occur since it's sort of out of the way?
So, Mr. Daly--
Thank you.
Do you want to respond to those questions? This is Cheryl Marshall, the Director of Parks and Recreation. Cheryl.
Thank you. Hi, Cheryl Marshall, Parks and Recreation Director. There is a sort of a natural buffer with the stream, and any fencing would be outside of the contaminated site, which there is rumor on the edges. And as the design process goes on, there will be public input, excuse me, public input as well. So it is written into the contract that just over fifty percent, I think when the plan is about sixty percent finished, that, so then we have something to actually talk about, that then we will have some public meetings.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. Yes, in the back.
Hello? Sorry. Ethan Spencer, 87 Pine Street. I'm also a member of, I'm on the Manchester Essex Youth Soccer Board and have been for a number of years, and also coached a number of other sports in town. Just to give you some statistics, this past fall, we had over 400 kids in our, just the youth soccer program, representing, you know, over two dozen teams in that program, which says nothing about the youth football, both tackle and flag, as well as field hockey and other sports. And we are at a real critical juncture right now with the lack of field space in this town. I can tell you firsthand, because I actually organize all of the field requirements for the youth soccer program, and on any given night, we potentially could have five, six, seven, even eight teams trying to practice on Brook Street at the same time, and/or at Sweeney Park. And if you've been back there, you realize more than half of Sweeney is unplayable and probably unsafe for the kids. I think having a vibrant youth sports program is critical for a town like ours, and it is in real danger right now because we do not have field space. And trying to get six, seven, eight teams onto Brook Street at one time, it's almost impossible to get in practices during the week, because as was mentioned earlier, we can't get on the fields till after 5:30. There's no lights on Brook Street or Masco. We lose the light, teams go to Sweeney, and honestly, we can't use Sweeney more than half the practices after it rains, for days after, we can't use that field. So we are a big supporter of this, the youth soccer program. I think this is a critical vote to-- I think this is a critical vote to ensure that we have at least some additional field space and as a Phase One of this whole project, that we get this done. Thank you.
Thank you. Arthur, do you have anybody waiting in the auditorium?
No further speakers.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, I'm Bob Doyle, 6 Anthony Avenue. We are abutters to this field. We are in favor of this field. Two things. One is, my wife just asked if there would be any sidewalk and safety procedures in place for kids who want to bike to the field or walk on that kind of fairly dangerous part of Pine Street. And secondly, I've been paying attention to this for the past couple of years, and my understanding is there will be no lights on this field, which is important to us. Could you confirm that, please?
Cheryl Marshall.
Hi, there are no plans for lights on that field. It won't even be a full-size field, so we do not plan to put lights on it. And as for sidewalks, that is not part of this field plan, however, when we do have that public input, that would be something that we would work with, work with the town and/or DPW or whatever to decide if that is something that is needed for that project. The public input meeting would be to talk about things like that.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. Further discussion? Yes, sir.
Steve Carhart, 12 Bridge Street. In ancient times, when I was President of Manchester Essex Little League, we fought many battles to get more fields in town, and it's always nimby, there's never a good place, but if we want to be something other than a retirement community, we need to support programs like this. The best we could do in my time was get lights on Sweeney. I hope we can continue to make progress. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Arthur, do you have anybody in the auditorium waiting?
No further speakers at this time.
And I don't see any hands up here. Is the meeting ready to vote? Okay, this is a majority vote. If you're in favor, press one. If you're opposed, press two, and the voting period is open. And the vote is 118 yes to 30 no. And that's approved. Article Three, Becky Jakes, the Vice Chair of the Board of Selectmen, moves, and Ann Harrison seconds. The motion stated in the handout under Article Three. And the selectmen recommend approval. Remarks, Ms. Jakes.
I didn't realize I wore my loud shoes today, but anyway. So this article is to transfer $120,000 from the Waterways Act for maintaining Harbor Master vessels and the purchase of a new one. There's no debate how important all of our harbors and waterways are, and these vessels have been maintained as well as they can be, and now we need to help provide a new one for the Harbor Master. And I think Bayon can tell you a lot more about this and more clearly than I can. Bayon?
I'll recognize Bayon Pike.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Bayon Pike, Harbor Master. This proposed vessel would replace our primary patrol vessel, the Eastern 24, that we purchased when I first started. It was a used boat. It was 10 years old when we got it. The proposed vessel is commercial in nature, provides the same shallow water response that we need, that the Eastern provided, along with a few other important improvements to help make sure that the waters are safe for all the boaters here. I think that's it.
Thank you, Bayon. And let me just say that I appreciate your brevity. You set today's speed record so far. And I'll recognize Sarah Melish for the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Under the prior article, I explained the Finance Committee capital budget review process. A request for a new boat is included in the five-year capital plan for next year, 2023. Unfortunately, the boat is no longer seaworthy, and we need to approve funding now to enable the boat to be on the water in the spring. Therefore, the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article.
Thank you, Sarah. You gave Bayon a good run. Is there further discussion in the gym? Yes, in the back.
Michael Logue, 86 plus. This is a simple question, hopefully a simple answer. How many boats do we have? It looks like there's three or four sitting down there, and they might be for something else, but I see what looks like official printing on the side of the boat. How many boats do we need?
Mr. Pike.
The town of Manchester owns and maintains three vessels. One is the Pump Out Boat, which is maintained with the Clean Vessel Act grant, covers 75% of all costs related to that vessel. The Eastern was our primary and only patrol boat for several years until concerns by residents east of the main harbor expressed that there wasn't enough coverage, and we saw the increased boat traffic at Long Beach dramatically increased, which necessitated a third boat for the town. We purchased the safe boat. The other vessel that folks see down there is a Noah Marine Fisheries vessel. We don't own it. They pay us to store that vessel here or keep that vessel here in our harbor. So we have three.
Thank you, Mr. Pike. Arthur, do you have any discussion in the auditorium?
No public comment in the auditorium.
And I don't see any other hands raised here. Meeting ready to vote? This is also a majority vote. If you're in favor, please press one. Opposed, press two, and the voting period is open. And the vote is 135 yes to six no. I think that's confirmation that brevity pays off. And Sarah Creighton moves the motion under Article Four in the handout, and Becky Jakes seconds. Remarks, Ms. Creighton. Oh, excuse me, just let me interrupt. I should say that the Planning Board recommends approval, as Sarah will undoubtedly tell you, the Board of Selectmen recommends approval, and the Finance Committee takes no position on this article. Sarah.
Good afternoon. The Manchester zoning bylaw is divided into seven sections that establishes districts, allows uses, and sets regulations for size and height and location of structures. It has been amended many times since adoption in 1945 and has become very disorganized and difficult to read. The Planning Board has spent two years working on revisions to the current bylaws with the help of an attorney who specializes in Massachusetts zoning best practices, and we propose to revise the zoning bylaw in several steps. Articles Four and Five are the first step in this simple reorganization, and at future town meetings, we will propose more substantive changes, and I'm sure you're all looking forward to a robust discussion on those changes in April. Article Four renumbers sections of the existing bylaw, expanding the number of sections from seven to 11, and moving some regulations into new sections to provide a better organization and making it easier for all of us to understand. The renumbering does not change the substance or the intent of the zoning bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Creighton. So this is a two-thirds vote under the Zoning Enabling Act, which is Mass. General Law's Chapter 40A, Section Five. That statute also requires that the Planning Board hold a hearing on zoning amendments before we can take them up, and that hearing took place on October 12th this year. And I'm going to limit discussion under this motion to renumbering only. In other words, we're not going to go into the substance or the merits of these zoning sections. We'll save that for another day. Is there discussion? Is there discussion in the auditorium, Arthur?
No public comment.
Meeting ready to vote? As I said, this is a two-thirds vote. If you're in favor, please press one. Opposed, press two, and the voting period is open. And the vote is 141 to one. Well more than two-thirds. We don't do anything unanimously, I think. And Chris Olney makes the motion under Article Five, and Becky Jakes seconds the motion to amend the zoning bylaw by deleting the sections that are renumbrated there. I would just note that the motion differs from the warrant article in the deletion of Section 6.14.3, which is referenced in the article, is not included in the motion. And the Board of Selectmen recommends approval. The Finance Committee takes no position, and I'll recognize Chris Olney for the Planning Board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So if we're cleaning out the attic, we've organized it, now we have to start weeding through and picking out things that don't work anymore. So this is our first stage in doing this. There'll be more deletions coming up in the future. These, we hope, are the simple ones, ones that really don't require much brain power to figure out. The first one is a zoning bylaw that was passed back in 1984, which required a special permit for reflecting antennas bigger than 100 square feet. Now with cable TV and all the other ways we have of getting media, this bylaw makes no sense anymore. It's kind of like banning elephants, only in this case, we're banning mammoths by doing this. There are no more mammoths. We don't need to waste our time and effort thinking about them. The second one has to do with planned residential development district. It's a rather large article, but it's redundant to others in the zoning bylaw. Basically, it allows the Planning Board to allow for clustering of residential units. However, the bylaw only applies in District C and E and only for parcels of more than 50 acres. So it's not really something, it's never been used as far as I know. And since we already have other sections in the bylaw that cover this, there's no point doing this as well. The next one is a really simple one, Section 6.10, Water Resources Protection District. It's actually just a heading. There's nothing behind it. The district has moved to a different section, but the heading remains, so we think it makes sense to delete that heading. This next one, 6.11, is probably a little more controversial. It was passed back in 1987, and it limited residential development to 200 units in Manchester. It's been in place now for over 30 years. It's based on the amount of capacity of the sewer treatment plant, which has been changed over the years by fixing the pipes and making less infiltration. So there's much more capacity now than there ever was in 1987. And more importantly, it's open-ended, would last forever. I don't know when the 200th unit was built, or maybe it hasn't been yet since 1987, but the 201st person couldn't build a house. Luckily, this is illegal. It's not anything that Massachusetts law allows, and so we should just delete it on its face. There may be ways of limiting development using the sewer treatment plant, but it shouldn't be through zoning. It should be through a bylaw of the town, if that's what the town wants to do. So we should just delete it.
Excuse me, Chris, you're a little over two minutes, so could you?
Okay, there are only two others. One is a division of land for development of multiple buildings, and this is, basically says that if you're going to subdivide the land legally for more than six units, you have to get a special permit. Well, you can't get a special permit for something that's legal, so it's just a non-sequitur, and we should delete that. And finally, the last one is a temporary moratorium on marijuana establishments. That was done back in 2005, I think. We now have regulations for allowing marijuana establishments in the limited commercial district, and so there's no point having a moratorium anymore. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. This is also a two-thirds vote under the Zoning Enabling Act, excuse me, the Zoning Enabling Act, and the required Planning Board hearing also took place on October 12th. Is there discussion? Arthur, do you have anyone looking to speak in the auditorium?
We have no comment.
Is meeting ready to vote? As I said, this is two-thirds. If you're in favor of this amendment, please press one. If you're opposed, press two. Voting is open. And the vote is 126 to 14, and that's adopted. Article Six. John Foyer, Vice Chair of Manchester Affordable Housing Trust, moves, and Ann Harrison seconds. The article is presented in the warrant in the statement of the handout. Remarks, Mr. Foyer.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Hello, John Foyer, Bob Clark, Harold Sweet. Here on behalf of the Affordable Housing Trust, I am the Chair. The Affordable Housing Trust was created by town vote in similar forms such as this in 2016. We were, our mission is to advance the expansion, the protection, and the creation of affordable housing in town. Subsequent to the vote of 2016, we have been the recipient of CPA funding, so I just want to say thank you very much for that. We've had some activities recently. One is we've administered the Mortgage and Rental Relief Program. It was probably one of the first, we were probably one of the first affordable housing trusts in the Commonwealth to work with residents who are experiencing COVID dislocation. We've been administering that since probably April or May of last year. And then despite recently, the Affordable Housing Trust has partnered with SEMA to provide support to the North Shore CDC, which enabled the North Shore CDC to purchase a private house, 29 units in town, and their mission is to preserve affordable housing on that site.
Now, you're coming from two minutes. Yeah, now to start this, talk about the article.
Yep. I'm here currently to talk about Article Six. This is something that we are seeking town support for. We think it's important because it accomplishes a number of objectives. One is it's going to be an affirmation of approximately three-year plan that the Affordable Housing Trust, the Health Department, it's advanced. We've worked on a preliminary proof-of-concept plan. We've had a number of meetings with the town. Second, advances a community then planning. Second, advances a community-led plan to create and support affordable housing in Manchester, integrated into the town, in neighborhood, and neighborhood tavern. It's something that the town is supporting. It's something that gets us to, or certainly moves us to a position where we can address a ten percent affordable housing inventory measure that's set by the state. Certainly particular to the Pleasant Street site. After many, many months of the master plan, it was clear that community affordable housing would be appropriate on that site. So this plan is consistent with that. I think support today would also be a very important favorable indicator to a developer, indicating that the town has preliminary support for the plan. Our intention would be to issue a request for a proposal that would solicit a developer to advance the proof-of-concept plan that we've worked on, and to do development, design, and finance work, and then engage, as we have been engaging with you. Finally, the non-binding nature of the low technologies that the plan is preliminary, it's a work in progress, and at the point when we have a defined plan where there's some request or a need for some form of concession of a land price on the Pleasant on the DPW site, we would have to return to a town meeting such as this to get that. So in closing, it's supported by, very personally, the Board of Selectmen, the Planning Board, as well as the SEMA Community Group, and with that, we ask for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Foyher. I'll recognize Ann Harrison for the Board of Selectmen.
On behalf of the Board of Selectmen, I ask you to join us in endorsing this article proposed by the Affordable Housing Trust. Article six is the first step for providing affordable housing that meets the needs of our town. We've all talked a lot about affordable housing up here. The consensus is that the town needs housing that's affordable to young families, to the people who work here in town, and to seniors who want to stay in the community. Affordable housing should be in-town, integrated into the community, walkable, host a school, shopping, the library, the parks, and the many other features of Manchester. Affordable Housing Trust confirms that Manchester cannot expect grant money to rebuild and extend its affordable housing, nor can the town afford to refurbish and expand affordable housing solely on the backs of the taxpayers. Finding developers to create mixed housing, some market rate, some affordable, appears to be the practical way to build the housing we want. Before developers will invest time and money in a proposal, they need a level of confidence that the town supports a large mixed-use project squared over four slices. This article asks you to express that confidence. We ask you to agree with the town's developer, a qualified developer, the use of ownership of seven acres offline speed at a discount in exchange for providing much more affordable housing, more units, and each unit more affordable than the state developers for a forty B development. The article does not provide any details. The details will vary in the future, including the value of the property, the amount of discount, how the candidate or waiting around business to someone, all valid questions. And before the project becomes reality, future town meetings will consider those issues. What the Housing Trust and the Board of Selectmen ask now is for your agreement to move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. I recognize Mrs. Wood, Chair of the Manchester Housing Trust.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm not the chair anymore, but that does change, but I am the housing authority represented to the Manchester Housing Trust. Very briefly, I just want to say that the Housing Authority has worked very closely with the Housing Trust on this for two or three years now. We're a hundred percent behind.
Excuse me, you can take your microphone.
Oh, sorry. The board is behind us completely. I just want to reiterate the fact that this is a non-binding vote. It's just to show potential developments that there's some real interest in affordable housing here in town, and also that a vote and a future town meeting would be absolutely necessary before any land transfer could come through. So I urge you just to give us the support we need to move forward with affordable housing in this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wood. I didn't have to caution the question on privately, because when she was town clerk, she had the self-buck. I recognize Chris Olney of the Planning Board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'll be working this time.
As you wish.
And as far as speaking the planning board voted to endorse Article six, and the development concept proposal by the Manchester Housing Authority and Manchester Affordable Housing Trust, the vote was five in favor, one opposed, and one abstention. The board recognizes that this is just a concept, and any definitive plays under the rigors of review process, with the participation of many boards, neighbors, residents of the Housing Authority properties, and others. It will require future votes in the town meeting as well, and it will be a long and complicated process, but the end result will be well worth the effort. The planning board bases the work endorsed with the part of the recommendations of the master plan, which generally pointed out that there's both a need for more diversity in housing options, and more specifically, on the potential of the DPW facility on Pleasant Street and the existing Housing Authority properties as potential alternatives. But it's just a first step, and it will be a long process, and we hope the town will reach a start. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olney. Can I recognize Sarah Malish of the Finance Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee makes recommendations regarding articles containing financial requests. Since this article is conceptual and does not contain a specific financial plan, the Finance Committee takes no position on this article. If the project is presented at a future town meeting with a specific plan, including the potential need to leverage town home loan to make the project financially feasible, the Finance Committee will do its due diligence and advise the town at that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Arthur, do you have anyone looking to be recognized in the auditorium?
No comments at this time.
Is there discussion in the gym?
Robert Beatty, fifteen, voting place road. I come not to speak either for or against the article, but to make a procedural motion that it be split into two, and that the town gives input with respect to Section A and Section B separately. I think the town will benefit from greater granularity of the detail that that would provide. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Under our bylaw, excuse me, under our bylaw, the moderator has authority to divide a question if it's susceptible to division, but it's also permissible for the meeting to decide to do that on its own. So I'll take that motion now if it's seconded. Is the motion to divide the question seconded?
We said we have a second.
It is seconded here, too. I have a second. Okay. So we'll take that first, and then we'll go back to discussion. So everybody understand what we're voting on. We're voting on whether ultimately when we decide this article is split into two votes, one vote on Section A and one vote on Section B. Everyone clear on that? Everyone clear in the auditorium?
We have a very clear.
Pardon me?
We have understanding.
Okay. It's taking a minute to load that into the voting system, so everyone is... He's ready. Okay. If you're in favor of dividing that motion, which will mean we will have two votes, one on Section A and one on Section B on the motion, please press one. If you're opposed, press two. The vote is sixty in favor and seventy-eight against, so we will not divide the question. We'll have a single vote at the end of the discussion on Mr. Foyher's original motion. Is there further discussion in the gym? Ms. Hill.
She'll go to Renner Road. I want to say that I one hundred percent support the quest for adding affordable housing to our stock. I one hundred percent support the work that NIHD has done, envisioning how that could happen. It's my bias that we not add market rate housing to town in order to solve our affordable housing issues, rather than we repurpose existing buildings in the downtown, as we asserted to be in the SEMA project. But beyond that, my concern about this article is, again, procedural. I'm being asked as a voter to approve something about which I have no information. I have no information on the extent of contamination on the DPW site. I have no information on what the no build and no disturb environmental restrictions are. I have no information on the value of the site and whether or not I would be content to give the site to a developer to build market rate housing. So I want to say this procedurally, that I think this would be much more useful to both developers and voters if we could vote in the spring, when we have some preliminary data on the viability, the buildability of the DPW site. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Is there further discussion?
Hello, Sandy Rogers, speak to Ole Miss Road. Thank you. As everyone said, I'm all for building out affordable housing. If anyone has seen the current proposal as a starting point, the units that we're talking about on the DPW site would be market rate. We're talking about big amounts regarding density. This is all to entice developers to play with us. The density that is being proposed, not only at the Pleasant Street and the DPW site, but also the Plains and the Newport Park site, is out of proportion for the neighborhood and would increase the traffic and would incur extra costs, the safety, the schools, et cetera. And the biggest thing that I have concern on is the cost of if we give this land away or we do a low-cost trade, then we are all going to be paying for a new DPW site. And there is no information concurrent with this proposal to go forward without any plans to do any investigation on what that new DPW site, where it would be, and how much it would cost us, and our future taxes, so that you can't just do one without the other. We have no information on this, and until we do this together, we are not going to be able to at all vote for this. So between the outrageous density for our town, the safety concerns of our citizens and our children, the units that we're proposing to develop at the Plains and the Newport site, or abiding conservation land of the Powerhouse, as well as Jack's Hill, and the cost of an unknown that we're all going to incur to pay off the developer. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Arthur, do you have anyone voting in the auditorium?
We have one speaker recognized, Manchester resident.
Yes, would you do that, please?
Please say your name and address.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, Tom Keough, Tony Lincoln Street.
I know as soon as I heard your voice.
Thank you, and I know I'm limited to two minutes. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think what we're being asked to do here is to vote on a concept, an idea, to take something from the very beginning and move it one few steps, a couple steps down the road, to let them into the Affordable Housing Trust, work with the plans, and continue. All the previous speakers have talked about everything that they think is necessary to have this. Well, unless people are going to work on design options, everything that way, you're going to wind up spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to get those plans done. So I would ask the members of the town meeting assembled today to vote yes and support the Manchester Affordable Housing Trust. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keough. I see Jay Baugh, who has his hand up. Mr. Baugh.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jay Baugh, who are board member, and I'm also the chair of SEMA. Set forth in a handout, SEMA strongly supports Article six and the efforts of the Housing Trust and the Housing Authority to expand and improve the stock of truly affordable housing here in Manchester. We don't believe there's any doubt about the lack of any recent progress on these fronts, despite the significant efforts of many people, or any doubt regarding the need to do so. The housing vision that's been outlined by the Affordable Housing Trust and the Housing Authority, including the use of the existing DPW facility for market rate housing, to help finance further redevelopment of Newport Park, Plains, and Looking Place Road, is, we think, a creative and thoughtful alternative to help achieve these goals. It certainly isn't the only way, and approving Article six doesn't lock anyone into this specific alternative. But approving Article six will put this group and the town on record as saying we are finally showing some collective will to take real steps and not just live service towards progress. It's evidence that we are prepared to put dollars to work, and we hope will kickstart a process to evaluate the merits of this alternative, as well as other potential avenues that can be surfaced and considered along the way. And we'll all have the opportunity to discuss and sign on for these alternatives, any of them that come up out of this process at future meetings, Affordable Housing Trust, Housing Authority, other boards, and future town meetings, to evaluate any specific proposal or the alternative. We can kick the can down the road, and we can continue to make little or no progress addressing this very real issue facing our community. We think it's time to speak up and move forward with all the efforts we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baugh. I think I saw another agenda a few moments ago.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Julie Morse, eleven, Jersey Lane. I don't want to be repetitive to Mr. Foyher, but I'll just say that until this point, we have not had any control in the development of affordable housing in this town, and we're facing a forty B up on Chingle Place Hill that I think very many people in this town feel is very inappropriate for our town. It's dislocation, it's environmental issues. I could go on and on, but we're going to be very short. By approving this article, we put ourselves firmly back in control of our destiny as it refers to affordable housing. We're not committing to anything. We're basically saying we want to look at what our options are and give our Affordable Housing Trust and our Manchester Housing Authority the go-ahead to look at what we want and what we desire in our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morse. Arthur, do you have any further discussion in the auditorium?
No further comment.
I don't see any hands up here either. Does the meeting make a vote? So meaning to make your vote. And this is a majority vote. If you're in favor of Mr. Voth's motion, please press 1. If you're opposed, press 2. And the voting period is open. And it's closed. And the vote is 126 in favor and 16 against. And we're going to move a little up pretty quickly, I think, from here, but I just want to take a moment to say thank you to everyone for coming to this beautiful fall afternoon and for staying through a much longer meeting than I expected it to be. I appreciate your perseverance. Article 7. Bill Cross, the president of the Citizens Initiative for Manchester Affordable Housing, wants to pass over, less to nothing, under Article 7, and Jay Voth, second's the motion. I think you all have a head that explains the reasoning. Meaning to make your vote on the motion to pass over. If you're in favor of that, please press 1. If you're opposed, press 2. The voting. Voting is open. And this is a majority vote. And the vote is 115 to 4. And Article 8, Bill Cross, also moves to pass over, do nothing under Article 8. And Jay Voth, a second. Meaning to make your vote. If you're in favor, please press 1. Opposed, press 2. Voting is open. And the vote is 115 to 4. Motion to pass over is approved. And Jeff Voth, the chairman, hopes to dissolve the special time meeting. Ikey Chase, second's the motion. If you're in favor, please say aye. For power as well. Mr. Anderson, the gym, and the auditorium, Arthur.
The unanimous here as well.
I declare the special time meeting dissolved. And to all the other members, please exit like all others.